Good afternoon. It's Monday, May 1st, 2023, 1:00 PM. I'd like to call the special meeting to order. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Point of inquiry.
Mr. Daley.
Who requested this meeting?
Mr. Daley, is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Who requested this meeting?
I requested the meeting because we had forgotten to vote the other day on a motion that had been properly made, properly seconded, the discussion had taken place, and then we moved the meeting on after a lengthy discussion. So we need to get the business underway for finding a board attorney and college attorney.
Why was the request for a meeting not included in the agenda package?
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Why was the request for a meeting not included in the agenda package?
Request for meeting?
Yeah, request for this meeting. Why was it not included?
I sent the letter to Jordan with all the pertinent information as it is listed in our policy 1530.
Where is that letter?
I can direct your attention to policy 1530 if you would like.
No, I don't need to have you do that.
A special board meeting may be called by the chairperson or by any three board members by giving written notice stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Notice of a special meeting shall be given by mail at least 72 hours before the meeting or by personal service at least 24 hours before the meeting. In lieu of a timely notice and a full membership being present, a special meeting can be declared. Therefore, the meeting was properly noticed and given to Jordan.
Why was a copy of the notice not included in the board package?
We'll ask Jordan. Jordan?
So as part of the public notice and making the board members aware of the notice and why the meeting was being called, it was under my assumption that it was showing what the purpose of the meeting was and identifying what the agenda item, with the agenda that was sent and posted to the public.
I'm looking for, I have what I was sent. What I'm looking for is the written notice from you to the board coordinator for the meeting.
I gave that to him. I gave it to him in two ways. One, I sent it to him via email. Second, I stopped at his office that afternoon and gave him a hard copy of it. That's our board coordinator. He takes his direction from the president of the college. I've done my part of this.
Well, all I know is I received a package in there that normally when we get it, we have a copy of the request that was made for the meeting, and to this point, I haven't seen it.
Okay. Jordan?
The chair did make it available to me, and when I created-
So, can I please step into this meeting? I don't know if you all can hear me or not. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, without the board attorney that normally looks through everything, I think Jordan has done his best, you know, to get it out. So, I would say that if you need that copy now, Jordan or Deandra can get the copy and go ahead and give it to everybody.
That would be fine.
And I can't see, so you have to just tell me if you all can do that or not.
And just to elaborate off that, the letter that was given by the chair and what's in the public notice as well as in the agenda is verbatim what is put in that message. So just to give you kind of an idea before it's sent, though, so.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe you all can continue the meeting and Deandra or somebody can make a copy of the letter, so.
Point of inquiry.
Point of inquiry, trustee Freeman.
So, I was wondering, how many special meetings have we had so far since January?
Is that germane to this meeting today, sir?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Well, it's a special meeting. I'm asking about the special meetings.
The first special meeting that was called was because we had a grant that was required to be put in on time. We were concerned because the regular meeting has been canceled.
That's not my question. How many meetings, how many special?
Mr. You're out of order, Mr. Freeman.
I just would like to know how many special meetings have we had?
Mr. Freeman, you're out of order.
I am not out of order.
I'm attempting to answer your question.
You are not. It's a simple question. How many have we had?
The answer to your question, Mr. Freeman, is we have had two meetings, two special meetings. The one was called because we had a grant that was required to be put in in a timely fashion, so we called that meeting. This second meeting is called because we do need to have legal counsel for not only the board but for the college.
Also, how much have we spent on these special meetings? Like, this is $30 right here. I got yelled at at home because I heard my tax dollars are being used for what?
Mr. Freeman, does this have anything to do with this meeting?
Yeah, I'm asking how much have we spent?
Would you like to have an exact calculation of that, Mr. Freeman?
I would like to have that made available to me.
When you make a motion for that at another meeting, we will be glad to go forward with that.
I would like that information. I think the public deserves that information.
Point of inquiry.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Daley.
Andy, I'd like to have a copy, or I'd like to know how the meeting date and time is selected for this meeting.
It was set because this was the easiest time that we could get it, and it gave an opportunity for students who don't necessarily are back on campus. So I thought this would be a good time that they would be notified as everyone else was, and they'd have the opportunity to-
How were the date and time picked?
That was it. I selected it. How quickly could we get this done from the time I was notified by the president that we had made an error at our last meeting? So as soon as that was done, I got busy going through our bylaws to figure out exactly how quickly we could do it. I then immediately after concluding and writing everything up, I sent it by email to Mr. Jordan.
In the future, when we set a special meeting date and time, I would like to have a little more coordination with the board, the individual board members by the chair. This is the second meeting that I've been to where I've had a special meeting where I've had to cancel things in order to accommodate the meeting.
I believe everyone here has your concern.
You apparently do not.
Mr. Daley, that's not a nice comment.
You're correct. It's not a nice comment.
I took into consideration our college community, who has taken a great deal of interest in the board this year. This would give individuals who do not necessarily have the opportunity to come back on campus in the evening to attend our meeting during the day.
The availability of the board members to attend the meeting at a special meeting of the board should have some priority in scheduling.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion by trustee. Is there a second? We have a trustee by Jeff.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Daley.
I move to, I want, move to make three amendments to the agenda.
Given that it's a special meeting that's called for a specific reason, the only thing that we can conduct at this meeting is what the special meeting was called for.
These have to do with that?
There's a motion on the floor, and you would like to, let's hear your first one.
The first one is to amend proposed item 1.37, to amend, to read as follows. Vote on the motion that Mott Community College start the search for a new board legal counsel sending out an RFP as soon as possible, period.
Do you have that, Jordan?
Can you restate that, please?
Vote on the motion that Mott Community College start the search for a new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP, request for proposal as soon as possible.
Okay, for the first amendment by trustee Daley, he wants to amend the proposed agenda item 1.37 to vote on the motion that Mott Community College start the search for new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP or request for proposal as soon as possible.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Is that?
I'm reading my motion list right now, and I think it would help if I read the entire list, and then we introduce, then we made motions.
So that's the first one that you would like to do.
Then introduction of 1.38, which has authorized the board to appoint an interim attorney to represent the board during the process. This attorney will not be considered as one permanent attorney. Item 3 is introduce item 6, or item, a new item 5, where item, Roman numeral 5 would be board of trustees' comments, and item 6 becomes adjournment.
Support.
Yes. That's correct.
The chair rules all motions are illegal.
Point of order?
Point of order, Mr. Daley.
The chair's motion is inappropriate because it's inconsistent with Public Act 331.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daley. 331 where?
The board, the 331 and its-
Please cite it exactly, sir.
I'm not sure about the exact cite. I don't have a copy with me.
Then the motion's ruling stands. Your additions to the agenda are illegal motions.
No, they're not illegal.
I have ruled them illegal. Therefore, we move on with the agenda.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Appeal the ruling of the chair.
And ask for a division of the House.
The ruling of the chair has been appealed. This means that if you vote yes, you agree with the chair that Mr. Daley's additions to the agenda are illegal. A vote no is that you agree with Mr. Daley, that they should be added to the agenda. So a yes means you agree with the chair that Mr. Daley's motions are illegal, and a vote no is that you agree with Mr. Daley. All those in favor?
No, discussion.
Mr. Freeman?
Discussion.
Would you like discussion?
That's usually part of the process, yes.
Very good. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, so essentially, I'm supporting trustee Daley in this because really, this is highly unusual. We do have a procurement office that makes sure that the board actually does things by the letter of the law, that they usually don't issue their own RFP because essentially there's a lot of mechanics into issuing an RFP because we receive tax dollars. We have to be very transparent about what we do. We have to make sure that the playing field is equal and level for all people. Today, we had an attorney show up that said he was brought in as the proposed interim already before we even had this vote, which I think is, you know, the optics of this are not terribly good. It appears that it's being done by design. And I believe that this board should all have the ability to weigh in on who's selected, even on an interim basis, to represent the college. We should all have the ability to weigh in on this and to do it in a transparent way. Because the way I read this, this is not very transparent, where someone is selected by the board chair without any sort of scrutiny, public scrutiny or scrutiny by other board members. This is the person who is supposed to be representing us, that keeps us legally safe and sound. And I would like to be able to weigh in on who that representative is. So I don't think it's beyond the pale to ask that the board actually has input. You know, my recommendation previously during committee meeting was that we do like we have done in the past, is that before we discharge one attorney, we actually have procured the services of another attorney in a legal and appropriate manner. So I myself am just asking the other board members to think about, we should all be able to weigh in on this. This is not one person's decision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would also like to weigh in on this and have, you know, an option to find someone as well, but ultimately, it be your decision.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Daley.
First of all, your strategy in asking me where specifically it says that is flawed. As you know, the Michigan Constitution sets up a legal process whereby for a municipal corporation, including community colleges, they have to have enabling legislation that allows them to do anything. And I do not believe that the scope of that regulate, the state statute or our bylaws authorizes the president to do, or the chairperson to do anything other than serve as presiding officer and as spokesman at certain times for the board. Further, the board in that, in that, in 331, the, everything is delegated to the board, and the board is not given the authority to delegate further. And I believe that what you're proposing is in fact an unlawful act.
Board officers' duties, policy 1320. Chairperson shall preside at all board meetings, perform all duties prescribed by law as directed by the board, preserve order and enforce board rules, appoint all committee memberships with board approval, act as a spokesperson for the board to outside parties regarding board stated positions and shared decisions and interpretations with the area delegated to him or her, exercise other powers as properly pertaining to the office or as may be delegated by the board.
And I believe that statement's consistent with what I said.
Excuse me, Mr. Daley, I've not concluded. Serve as board liaison to the president. I have now concluded. So therefore, and then next, the last one, exercise other powers as properly pertaining to the office as may delegated by the board.
That is consistent with what I stated.
Very good, Mr. Daley. I have asked the board, there's been a motion that was made, it was properly seconded, and now you have gone off on these other things, and so we're weighing through them at this point. We're doing the best we can to make sure everyone has had input here.
And as a comment, I must tell you, I'm extremely disappointed that you proposed this. I can't tell you how many times you and I have sat in conversation during the COVID-19 virus where you were against consolidation of power into one area of the college. And I see this as an outright move to try to consolidate power inappropriately under a chairmanship's position. Mr. Chair, you have no authority other than what's given to you properly and legally.
Very good. Are there any other comments? Mr. Freeman?
So, you know, there's been this pattern of dissension and arguments and whatnot. I would just ask very politely and humbly of my other board members that this could be a point where we do agree and come together, that we should all have a say, that we should all be able to give our opinions and share information, because if we don't, it's just going to continue like this. And that's not good for the college. So I would say that it's not that much of a sacrifice to allow all the board members to weigh in on the legal representative, which actually serves each of us individually and as a unit.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chair? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Freeman, I, I thought this meeting was just to get a temporary attorney, legal representation for the board and the college. It was my understanding that we're, all the board is going to have input on the permanent attorney. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Swanson.
To answer your question, I've been through-
Mr. Freeman, you have not been recognized.
Please, I would like to answer.
Please direct your answer to the chair.
Yeah. So, in response to trustee Swanson, I've been through procurement of a board attorney, and it's not like one meeting, we get somebody to cover. It takes a while to get all of the responses in, to rate and score those. So, I mean, the business card that I was given by, whom I believe was brought in by our chair, is a mediation facilitator. I don't know in any of his experience working with higher ed issues, and that's the thing that we have to be very careful of. It's just not a general attorney. We have to have one that is experienced even on an interim basis because decisions will and can be made.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Daley.
The... Just as a point of curiosity, you, when we're in formal negotiations, it's always Mr. Daley. And I notice when you talk to the other members of this board of trustees, you talk to them as trustee. And so in the future, I'd appreciate it if you, it'd either be trustee or doctor, because I've earned that title.
Thank you very much, trustee Daley.
The second thing-
So noted, trustee Daley.
The second thing is that I'm very uncomfortable with the motion that was proposed in the agenda because it leaves the timetable open for appointment of permanent counsel.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
We are not on that topic at this time. We are on the topic of whether or not I, you have challenged the chair.
That's correct.
So we can speak on that item and that item only. Do you have anything to add to that, trustee Daley?
Nothing other than what I've already said.
Thank you, trustee Daley. Does anyone else wish to address this issue?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make this clear. So you are allowing every one of us to have an input when it comes to board legal counsel?
Yes, you have to. What will end up happening is after we have had this meeting and made a decision, if we make the decision in the affirmative for the way the motion is made, we will appoint, I will immediately appoint a board counsel for us and the college, should that pass. Then, the RFP, we will begin working on, and we have to have input, not only from what the college has done in the past, so we can see that, but also what was done, what the ideas are from the Michigan Community College Association, as well as what other colleges throughout the state have done on this, because pretty much everybody has done this at one time or another. After we have done that, the temporary counsel will help put this together with the college so that we have an idea of what we want in it. In the meantime, any input or suggestions from boards members can send those to me via email so that they have input. Once we have a document put together, it will be sent to each one of the trustees so that they can read it and call, and not call, but send emails and make their input, so we have everybody's input into where we want to go for this.
So when we do the interviews, we will all be included in that?
We have to be. There'll be a meeting, and in the past, when this was done, we had a special meeting. We brought in each of the firms or attorneys that had applied for the position. Each board member had a question or several questions to ask. They read their questions, and the law firm or attorney gave us their answers. We then graded how we felt they gave us their presentation, and then we voted on that. We had our board coordinator tabulate what the scores were for each, and then we had the final, I believe it was three, that we were looking at, and then the board decided from there.
Point of inquiry?
Yes, trustee Daley.
Mr. Chair, you just cut me off previously on a point on my discussion, on that it wandered afield, and yet you just entertained a discussion that wandered far from the question that's before the board and engaged in that. My question is, my inquiry is why?
Her question, as I took it, was to understand how this entire process and if they voted yes or no.
That's not the questions before the board at this point, as you've pointed out.
A point of order, well taken. Are there any other comments or questions as it relates to the vote? And Mr. Trustee Reyes?
Yeah, in your answer to Wendy, trustee Walcott, you said that this was us choosing the board attorney for the board as well as for the college.
Yes.
Those are two separate positions.
That is in our policy manual. That is how it is listed.
Okay. Yeah, because it seems to me that, yeah, I'd like that cited, because the college has an attorney and the board has an attorney.
Mr. Chair, if that's true, then how was Amber acting on both?
She was, the-
She was aboard?
The firm was through the chair. The firm was appointed, or not appointed, but selected by the board for both. Well, selected for board chair. We didn't have, that I'm aware of, we didn't have a say in the college attorney. I may be wrong.
Correct. Point of information?
Recognizing-
That I'll provide. I was part of this process. We procured, we ran, there were separate procurement. So both the college, like the administration chose blah, and then when we did our interviews as well, and we procured just the board attorney, they were also successful with us as well. So there's no real conflict with that, but we can go in two different directions, too. We can have our own, just because we choose somebody doesn't mean the college has to choose the same and vice versa. The college chooses somebody, we don't have to choose the same.
Go ahead, Andy.
Before I go to your question, trustee Daley, there's a question from trustee Reyes and from other trustees that are probably wondering about this. I'm going to cite two policies that gives us authority to do this. First one is policy 1700. The board recognizes the need for ongoing professional services such as legal, architectural audit, et cetera. The board further recognizes the importance of the continuation of records and relationships with the providers of those services. The president shall review the status of professional service agreements with the board every three years, with the exception of the board attorney, which shall be reviewed every two years and make recommendations regarding whether to seek competitive proposals or to continue with the existing providers. However, this provision shall not be considered a continuation to employing professionals for any period. The board shall retain full discretion to determine the duration of professional service arrangements. Policy 1710. The board shall retain a qualified attorney or legal firm to handle the legal matters of the board and the college, and to receive compensation as the board may provide. The duties of the board attorney or legal firm shall be prescribed by regulation. The board attorney shall be appointed during the board's biannual organizational meeting. Number one, the board attorney or legal firm for the college shall have the following responsibilities. A, upon request of the board chairperson or president, attend all board meetings and act as counsel. B, render a written opinion on all legal questions when requested by the board. C, prepare or supervise the preparation of all legal papers and documents which shall be executed by the board officers, and/or shall approve all legal papers and documents. D, provide such opinions or other legal information to the president which may be necessary for the immediate or long-range conduct of the college business. E, represent the college as specifically designated by the board in litigation to which the college may be a party or on which it is interested. F, shall upon request represent the board in the purchase or sale of any real estate. G, attend to and act on any matters the board refers to him or her for the supervision, adjustment, or disposal. H, prepare all questions to be placed upon the ballot for regular or special elections. I, periodically provide progress reports to the board on legal matters. J, perform such other services as requested by the board. Second, the board will determine the compensation to be paid for legal services. Three, the chairperson or president is authorized to contact the attorney on legal matters concerning the college. Four, the board's legal counsel shall be... Shall not provide personal legal assistance to individual board members, the president, or members of the staff unless specifically authorized to do so by the board. And five, if any dispute or potential divergence of interest between the board and the president, the president shall not utilize the board's counsel to represent his or her interest. Six, the board of trustees or the president may utilize other firms as needed to address special needs.
Point of order. Is this germane to the motion that's on the table?
The question was asked, trustee Freedom, and it does because it answers-
Is it germane? That is a germane.
Because the question that was asked is fully answered now with the entire policy having been read. Right. Yes, trustee Reyes?
Follow up on the question that I had. So, the policy, as you read it, does not say that it is done with the same... Necessarily, the same RFP. It should be, I think, that, you know, with the question that trustee Walcott asked, having two separate entities is a good thing. And so, with what this seems to be proposing is that there's only going to be one RFP, not the additional. So, if an RFP is not done by the college for the thing, then they can notify Blaha's firm that they're going to do an RFP. But I don't see where the dismissal of the board attorney has any impact on who the college uses at this point for their attorney. So, I appreciate you reading through that, but... And you did answer my question, but it did bring up an additional question to that because when, as trustee Freeman indicated, the last time that this was done, the college already had their attorney, and then the board chose its attorney. We chose our own attorney. It just happened to be the same individual, same firm, okay? The firm was our... Was who we chose. They assigned Amberly. So, I'm worried that by us rushing headlong into this and ceding authority, that we are setting, again, an ill-advised precedent, but also that we need... It would have been better for us, and I realize the way the motion was stated at the last meeting, and I am in support of the appeal by trustee Daley, that we could have maintained the interim services of Blaha while we went through... While we went through this. By severing ties the way that we did, we are now without an attorney, because I believe that even though we will all have a say in our... In the final, anytime we're hiring somebody, I don't believe that we have the authority to cede that... To cede that power. It is something that is a board's decision. But, again, I'm in favor of the appeal, so thank you.
To answer a couple of questions, and maybe there were more of a comment. Blaha and Collins were labor attorneys that took care of labor issues for the college, and they were not our college attorney. The college attorney business was handled by our former board attorney, Jim Delaney. And he brought Blaha and Collins in when we had labor issues.
Okay.
Secondly, I have often made the comment about what happened at Michigan State, particular with their law firm that was taking care of business for the board, that not necessarily kept the board informed of what was going on with a particular doctor. There needs to be two separate attorneys. I have always said that. I have many times brought that up at former meetings. As we go through this process, the board attorney needs to be separate from the college attorney. We are simply attempting to get this moving down the road at this time. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, trustee.
I'd like to call to question.
Okay. So, now there's a... Is there a second to call the question? Is there a second to call the question? And the question would be, we're voting on Mr. Trustee Daley's, and he has challenged the Chair. So, is there a second to Couch's? If not, we will continue on with discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
When trustee Reyes said that we're rushing the process-
Wait, please wait. And I will ask twice more. Is there a second to Mrs. Couch's? Is there a second? There is not. No, we will go on with discussion. Trustee, you have-
Trustee Walcott?
It's trustee Walcott.
Thank you. As Mr. Reyes said that we are rushing this process, what is the timeline that you're looking at for us to find an official board attorney?
My timeframe, from having discussed with an attorney and other attorneys besides the one that I brought today, as well as two judges, their recommendation was by the time... It will take three weeks minimum by the time we get everything put in place to send out the RFP for the board attorney, to make sure that we have everything done correctly. Then that process, that's not just my decision, that's going to come back to the board. For input, it will be sent to you, like I mentioned earlier, via email, so that we have... That it was sent out, that you guys have made any responses that need to be responded to, any further questions or ideas, because we want to make sure that this is done and inclusive for the board, to protect the board and protect the college. Does that answer all of your question? Is there anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is new to trustee Walcott and myself as far as the board attorney. I... Any idea the length of time it took the last time to procure an attorney?
I can answer this, because I was on the board. The attorney was Jim Delaney. He was let go in December.
No, he wasn't. Mr. Chair, that is a point of information. Point of information, he was not let go.
That's not a point of information. It's a comment. Please direct it as a question.
Well, he wasn't. That's a fabrication. He was not let go. He actually was one of the people who responded to the RFP as well. Just all he did, they brought someone in to guide the process who had no interest in applying for the... Like, he had a conflict at that point. It did take months. It took months to get... Because you have to not only get the RFP together, you have to release it, give people enough time to do the... To answer everything, bring everything back, evaluate all the proposals that came in, and then also do it in public meetings as well when you make the final decision. So, I would say bare bones, three months at least.
Trustee Freeman, the record will show for the December of 2019 that Mr. Delaney was discharged as our legal counsel.
That's not true.
There was a vote that was taken of the board. I was there, as was Mr. Reyes.
That's not true.
Then, we did go through the process without any input from fellow board members-
That's not true.
-for the appointment of the acting legal counsel. And it did, to answer your question. It was not until March that we were able to appoint. So, when I'm telling you three weeks-
It's a fabrication.
Point of order, Mr. Freeman, you are not recognized at this time, and if you are continually mumbling and need medical assistance, we can have that for you. To further your answer, after we have spent the three weeks to figure out how exactly we're going to do this with input from the board, and then the board will decide that we send it out. Now, just as trustee Freeman had said, it takes a while to get everything out, the people applying, we go through and checking everything, and then scheduling the meetings. It may very well take three months to do this. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I understand the length of time it's going to take. We're sitting here bickering. We need an interim attorney. You know, that's well known. We do need that. I, whether the Chair appoints it or we get a committee to appoint the interim, it has to be done. We can come together as a board and figure out who the permanent attorney needs to be, but this bickering back and forth, it's just... It's not going anywhere. So, you know, other than we're looking like fools to the public. You know, I know there's animosity on this board, but maybe it's time to just bury those issues, if possible. You know, I... I don't know. I just have never been involved in something like this with the bickering. I just... We all want the college to move forward. We all have our own ideas on what's best for the college. You know, I'm not going to get everything I want. Mr. Freeman, you are not going to get every... None of us are going to get everything we want. But, you know, we're adults, and we can talk about this and come up with reasonable compromise, you know, because the way we're going, there's... Nothing's ever going to get done. We're going to be bickering back and forth. You know, and is it just one person's fault? I don't think so. I think there's plenty of blame go around. It's just, we need to stop this and figure out, let's get an interim attorney, and then we can argue all... Everybody wants to on a permanent attorney. But the thing is, is we need the interim attorney, so...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trustee Reyes?
May I respond through the Chair?
Go ahead, trustee Reyes.
This is a prolonged process, and speaking for myself, the questions that I have are valid questions. This is about making sure that the board is doing things in a transparent and proper way. We may have differences of opinion, but during this particular discussion, I have seen no bickering. What I've seen are questions and answers, and if clarification is required on that question. I don't doubt that any question that any of the trustees make are done other than in good faith. If it was just, you know, trying to shout each other down or trying to... Yeah, that gets into childish behavior. But I'm looking for transparency of this process, and that's something that the public may want or not want to hear every one of the questions that we have, but the way that will make us look bad, in my view, is if a decision is made or decisions are made and there is no discussion on these types of things. This is a brand-new process for the majority of the board. And because of that, it's important that the people who haven't been through this process before understand that we had as much transparency as possible. So, and then, for clarification earlier, Jim Delaney was retained on a month-to-month basis, even though we... The board had decided we were not going to renew his services. He was kept on a month-to-month basis. So, he, in fact, was our interim attorney. And then, the process for the RFPs and how that was handled, that was given to another attorney who did not have a stake, who was not interested in becoming our attorney. So, these nuances are important, and it's in... Like they say, the devil's in the details, you know? So, these details, in my view, are important. If I have said something that has been viewed as being disrespectful or talked over somebody or done something in this meeting, I apologize for that. But the questions that I have were asked in good faith.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I believe, though, that this is transparency, what we're talking about right now. From what I gather, we're going to find an interim attorney. We all are going to have a say-so, right? And the board and college attorney?
Trustee, please direct your questions and comments to the Chair.
We're all going to have a say-so?
Yes.
And the attorney that we're going to get?
Yes, I've said that before. It has to be done that way. Unilateral decisions are not made by the Chair.
Okay.
When we come to the permanent attorney-
I mean, do you feel okay with that? Through the Chair? Trustee Reyes?
You do not ask trustee Reyes, you ask-
I said through the Chair.
Through the Chair. Trustee Reyes, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As you've indicated several times, the say of the board will occur at the final decision on who we hire as our board attorney, not on the interim attorney. What we are being asked to do is cede the authority for that process to the Chair. And the questions that trustee Daley asked earlier were... Went to the legality of that per the statute and those things. So, even those questions were questions that need to be answered. If we take an action right now that is illegal, then we put ourselves at risk. So, it's important that we know the answers to those things, but from my understanding of the comments of the Chair, the board will have a say at the end when we're hiring an attorney, but not until that point.
Let me direct your attention back to what I said earlier. After we've decided to do this, because the way the motion is written now, that each of you will have the opportunity to contact me via email and let me know what your ideas are. Everything will be sent to each one of you as it relates to the RFP before it's sent out, with any adjustments or input that we need to have from each one of you. So, contrary to the way you're perceiving it, all- So contrary to the way you're perceiving it, all steps through this, each one of them, each one of you will have the opportunity to make input so that we get this correct.
Okay, so...
Yes, Mr. Reyes?
So then, let me understand this. We have three weeks to come up with some ideas that will, if the chair has given the authority to choose to appoint an interim attorney, the information that we're getting to you in the next three weeks has to do with that, and not with the questions that will be asked after the RFP?
Not during the interview. The questions for interview, we can come up with later.
Okay.
What we need is, what do we want on that RFP? And there's a variety of sites that you can go look at to see RFPs that have been done in the past, for thought starters.
Right, but the RFP has nothing to do with the interim attorney as this motion is set, correct?
The interim attorney will represent us at the board meeting, help the college with anything that comes forward that we need legal counsel on, until we have appointed our permanent attorney for the board. And remember, when this RFP is going to be done, it's going to be two. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? There will be now two. There'll be one for the board attorney, and one for the college attorney. Are there any other questions or comments? Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Is your microphone on, because I'm not hearing you?
I guess I'm confused. The, in...
I'm sorry, can I, can I jump in here?
In the finding of an interim attorney, you say that the board chair, or that the board will have input, but input is not the same as appointing. You can, you can take input from us, you don't have to listen to it. I see examples of that all the time.
How? Trustee Daly?
The board is, the board, the board attorney, in or not, is supposed to represent the board.
Absolutely correct.
Every member on the board. So every member on the board should have a hand in selection, an appointment. This board, I do, I truly believe, part of my job, part of the due diligence that I have to do as a trustee, is when I see legal rocks on the horizon, as part of the leadership team on this ship, is to inform the other members of the leadership team, you've got trouble ahead with what's been proposed. I see nothing in 331 that gives the board the authority to delegate this kind of authority to the chair.
Could you cite in 331 exactly where you're speaking from?
331 doesn't have to, there's no enabling legislation that permits it.
But it does in our bylaws for the college.
You, that, the state...
Lacking the information in 331.
331 trumps, you can put anything you want to in the bylaws, Mr. Chairperson, but it still has to conform to the state statutes and the processes of the state legal system thereof.
Okay.
That comes from 30 years of experience in dealing with it.
In this case, in this case, we are trying to...
We don't know what you're talking about, Mr. Chair. It's that simple.
In this case, we are trying to move the board forward to make sure we have legal counsel at this time.
Then move forward with the board making the appointment, so that all members share equally in this.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Therefore, are there any other questions or comments?
This is Dr. Reverly, if you all can hear me.
Saying no other questions or comments.
Yes, we can.
You all can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair. I would like to clarify the policy that you read earlier about what you're voting for with the board counsel versus college counsel. I think one of the most important parts was that ending where the chair, the, not the chair, the board, the president has the ability to appoint for special circumstances, and I don't have it in front of me, but that is, you know, something that we have been, you know, doing. We have lots of different attorneys that we, you know, use for various types of things, including contracts. So I just want to make sure that, when you keep saying, you know, the board and the college, you know, the main things that Mr. Delaney was working with was the board issues, and then the real estate types of issues. And so I want to make sure that, as you're going through that, that we have the ability to address different types of issues that the college needs to have attorneys to work for us, and, and the board policy gives us that, so...
Is there any other questions or comments? Saying that, Mr. Jordan?
I think before, I think before we vote on the appeal, I think trustee Daly should restate the motion, or his amendments before, the first being amend propos, amend the proposed item 1.37, vote on the motion that the board start the search for new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP.
What I proposed was one, a new 1.37, which would read, vote on the motion for the, for my community college to start the search for a new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP as soon as possible, and then a new 138, which would authorize the board to appoint an interim legal counsel to represent the board during the process. This attorney will not be considered as our permanent attorney. Then a new Roman numeral five, which is board comments, and an addition of Roman numeral six, which is adjournment.
And so with those four amended, or four amendments requested by trustee Daly, of, which he, which he appealed the chair, that was ruled illegal, so a vote aye would be in favor of the appeal, a vote no would be in support of the chair and his...
Just a minute, Jordan, I believe you have that wrong. Yes is agreeing with the chair. Yes is the aye. The aye is the yes to vote, to agree with the chair, and then the no is that Mr. Daly's correct, and then we can go forward on those.
Okay.
So a yes means you agree with the chair, and a no means you don't agree with the All those in favor, signify by saying yes or no. We will do this in a roll call vote.
I ask for a division of the House.
That's, we're doing a division of the House right now, Mr. Daly. That's all this means. Mr. Daly, trustee Daly, how do you vote?
I vote no.
A no. Mr. Reyes?
No.
Trustee Freeman?
No.
Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Swanson?
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting whether you agree with me, which is yes means you agree that his motions are illegal, and no means we go forward with his motions.
I am confused here. I'm sorry, we went back and forth so many times.
Okay.
No, I understand that, understand that. What, what this amendment is doing is just giving the whole board a say-so in temporary attorney.
At this point, at this point, no. All's we're doing, all's we're doing on this one, I've ruled...
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that, so I'm going to vote no.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
And yes. Four votes no, and three votes yes. Therefore, we can go forward with Mr. Daly's motions. So, to replace item 1.37, there's been a motion, and would you please read the motion?
The motion by trustee Daly is to amend proposed item 1.37 to vote on the motion for my community college to start the search for new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP or request for proposal as soon as possible.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second from Mr. Reyes. Is there any discussion? As chair, I have some discussion on this. As the way the motion is currently read, the chair would do this. The chair would get this put together with the interim board attorney. By leaving it up to the college, by leaving it up to the college, you have given away your right to oversee this. You've given it to the college. Is that really what you want to do after everything each one of you have said?
Mr. Chair, I'd simply point out that this board of trustees is the governing body of this college.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Trustee Freeman?
Just to clarify, this isn't giving away power by us being able to weigh in on it. In fact, I mean, before, all the trustees actually did weigh in on what they wanted to prioritize within the RFP. We actually have a good RFP template that was already created, and I think we could look at that one and then maybe make some edits on that, but we don't have to start over. We have a department that can do procurement, that can do all the business, but at the end of the day, we decide the priorities, you know, what goes into the RFP, so I don't think we're letting any power go at all, and we can all weigh in on it, and actually, in our committee meetings, that's a great place where, I mean, even this interim issue, we could resolve in the committee meetings, because that's a public meeting, and then each of the two committees could weigh in and say, well, you know, here are people that we feel comfortable with. I just, I understand, we do need to have an interim, but unfortunately, the action of the last meeting got us where we are today. So having an emergency situation of we need an interim attorney, I don't trust anyone to represent me who I don't know. I don't care who, what judges say that this is a good person, I want to know the experience, the capacity, you know? I, I just, I would feel more comfortable knowing who, even on an interim, three months, anything could happen in three months. I don't want to get sued, because that's, that's the liability that we have here, is that we could get sued with bad legal counsel. That's why we all should be able to weigh in on this, and that's all I'm asking.
Are there any other questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote. This is item 1.37. Vote on the motion. Would you please read the motion again? Jordan?
Trustee Daly wants, or proposes the amendment of one, one, item 1.37, to vote on the motion for my community college to start the search for new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP, request for proposal as soon as possible, and trustee Reyes has seconded it.
Roll call vote. Trustee Daly?
And I want to be clear that I'm voting on, that what I'm voting on is 1.37 as amended, and it says vote on the motion that the, that my community college start the search for a new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP, request for proposal as soon as possible. Is that correct?
That is correct, that's what I have, yep.
Yes. Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Swanson?
Trustee Couch? Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
The yes have it, the motion 1.37 has been changed.
Trustee Daly introduced item 1.38 to authorize the board to appoint an interim legal counsel to represent the board and the college during the process. This attorney will not be considered as our permanent attorney.
In my motion, it was, I deleted in college.
Okay.
Please read it again.
Authorize the board to appoint an interim legal attorney to represent the board during the process. This attorney will not be considered as our permanent attorney.
Is there a second for this?
Second.
A second from Mr. Reyes. Is there any discussion? Saying that, we'll do a roll call vote once again. All those in favor signify by saying yes or no. Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott?
Basically, this is the same, it's the same exact motion, so yes.
No, the difference in this is the chair would have done it, now it's going to the board. So you voted yes?
Yes.
Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
Trustee Couch?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Ebermann? The yeses have it. Next item on the agenda?
Trustee Daly wants to add section five, trustee comments.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it.
Trustee Daly wants to add item six, Roman numeral six, for adjournment.
To change it to...
To change, to change...
Item six.
To add item six to the agenda, which would be adjournment.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, item six. Jordan, we have taken care of all the business, we are now at trustee comments, is that correct?
Nope, you still have to vote on the adoption of the agenda.
Public comment?
You haven't, you haven't adopted the agenda yet.
Okay, very good. Good call, Jordan.
Yes.
We have now motioned to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the agenda.
Yes, trustee Daly?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I can't hear you, is your mic on?
I move to adopt, the agenda is revised.
Motion to adopt the agenda is revised.
Second.
And we have a second. All those opposed? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The motion has been adopted. Comments from the public?
Mr. Chair, we have one comment.
In accordance with section 1640 of the meeting procedures, board policy states that the board chairperson shall invite the public to address the board. All citizens who wish to address the board, or who wish to communicate with the board in writing, shall identify themselves and/or group they represent, if any. They must also state their reason for addressing the board. Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks, unless the time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting the remarks may be, may be made by citizens, but submitted to the board for consideration. Would you please tell us your name and any organization that you... Would you please tell us your name and any organization that you or group?
Excuse me?
Madam, would you please tell us who you are and any organization that you are representing to speak for today?
Yes. My name is Bobby Walton. I live in Davison, and I have a copy of my comments for anyone who would like a copy. And with your indulgence, I'm going to read them, because I think it is fair for me not to take up too much of your time. I'm going to start with some public statements, and then I will conclude with my questions. The statements are, "Public trust of this new board has been damaged since this board took office because of possible violations of the Open Meetings Act. We trust the people we elect because of laws, regulations, rules, processes, not because we like them or want to have a beer with them. This trust has been violated when those we elect do not respect the right of the public to information or to view the process of decision-making, which is what the Open Meetings Act requires. Round robin is used to avoid evidence of predetermined decisions and is a violation of the Open Meetings Act." And I will enunciate that more clearly. When you contact each other and say, "This is what I'm going to vote on," that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. You discuss what you're going to vote on in public, in front of the public. My questions. The public has a right to the answers to these. What action taken by the board triggered the letter from the Collins Blaha Law Firm with an offer to step aside as the college's legal representation? And those of us who watched your April 24th meeting had that question. Why did they send you that letter? Number two, when was the decision made to fire the law firm? Number three, who made the decision? Number four, why is the Blaha Law Firm not being used during the interim while a search for a new firm is being undertaken? And I recall, when you read the letter, that they offered to serve during the interim while you're looking for a new attorney. Was the decision to seek new representation during the interim period made because of ethical or moral issues with the Collins Blaha Law Firm? And if so, why don't we know what those are? And when the call for the question was about investigation of this at the April 24th meeting, I was surprised, appalled, to hear something about a pocket veto, which is not within the jurisdiction of any chair of a board, and that the investigation was conducted but no evidence was presented. Next one, the time period and public process required to hire a new lawyer during this interim period leaves the university without representation. It seems prudent and good management to keep the Collins Blaha Law Firm. While the search for new representation is undertaken, they are education law specialists. After all, and the college needs representation that is so specialized. Why is the Chair leaving the community in the dark by taking the authority of choosing an interim attorney away from the whole body? And of course, that has already been addressed in revising your, your agenda. When did the word "appoint" become operative instead of "to hire"? You don't appoint an attorney, you hire an attorney. You appoint public officials or people who serve on boards and committees. Is that intended to make the process seem more official? Does the Chair already have an attorney in mind? And if the person chosen can be shown to have been attending the meetings of the Board of Regents, can we assume that this has put the job up for hiring a favorite of some of the board members? And that concludes my written comments, and I will conclude by saying that in listening to the discussion of the amending of the agenda, I was appalled and angered to hear so many times things that were proposed that were violations of the Open Meetings Act. And I will remind this board that I, as a representative of the community, have within me the authority and the power to join with other members to require you to have an attorney if we decide to engage into a civil suit, to charge you with violations of open meetings law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jordan, was there anyone else who would like to speak today?
That is it.
Under new business, item 1.37, as it has now been changed. Jordan, could you please read that for us? Item 1.37.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one, item 1.37 now reads as, and has been amended, is Mott Community College to start the search for new board legal counsel by sending out an RFP request for proposal as soon as possible.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Support.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, couldn't get to the microphone. The motion that says the college will search for the board attorney, does that imply that the board itself will have input on who we ask?
Not the way it reads now. The way it reads now is that the college will. It's not the board. We're giving our authority to the college. That's what it reads.
That's not what it reads.
Mr. Chair.
You're, you're omitting the word "start."
Mr. Trustee Freeman.
So as it ran before, the college just did the procurement. We laid out all of the process and what we wanted and what the requirements were. It's just, I, I'm not a procurement person. It's nice to have somebody do that for us. That's, the college will do that for us. I doubt Dr. Beverly won't. I think she'll probably work pretty hard to make sure that we all have input into the attorney that we want, because we have to approve them at the end of the day. So we are not ceding any control. It's just, they're, just like many functions are done for us on the board, it's like, they just manage the procurement, putting out the RFPs, mailing them out, making them available on our website, and then it's up to attorneys to respond to it based on the criteria that we articulate.
That is not part of the motion. The motion is we turn it over to them.
It's just discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other discussion? Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Wilcox.
Can you skip me for a second?
Your microphone.
Skip me for just a second, please.
Okay. Trustee Swanson.
That'd be a no.
Okay. Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Couch.
No.
Trustee Reyes.
Yes.
Trustee Wilcox.
No.
Trustee Overman, no. The motion has failed.
We have item 1.38 that was added to the agenda, and it is to authorize the board to appoint an interim legal attorney to represent the board during the process. This attorney will not be considered as our permanent attorney.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Support.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yea or yes. All those opposed, no. Mr. Reyes.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mrs. Couch.
No.
Mrs. Wilcox. Mr. Swanson.
Yes. Excuse me.
No. The yeses have it. So, item 1.38 authorized the board to appoint an interim attorney to represent the college during this process. Is that correct?
That is how the item is read, yes.
Very good.
Point of order? I believe it says to represent the board. You said the college.
Oh, my mistake there. We do have that correct now.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can, can you read that motion again?
Jordan, would you read that motion again?
Item 1.38 authorized the board to appoint an interim legal attorney to represent the board during the process. This attorney will not be considered as our permanent attorney.
So everybody's fine with their votes. We don't need to change anything. You've got it good, right? Okay, that has now passed. Let's go to the next item on the agenda.
It'd be number five, room number five, trustee comments.
Trustee comments. Trustee Daly.
I have nothing more to add.
Trustee Reyes.
With the defeat of the motion, 1.37, the board has not expressed its wishes on the start of the process, because the amendment was changed from the Chair start the search for a new board legal counsel to the college doing it through their department, the, the RFP. Now that is, it's in, in the Netherland. It's, it hasn't been addressed. So without there being something to direct that this be done, we're going to end with another special meeting, having to do that.
Special meetings.
Or, or, at our next regularly scheduled meeting. So somebody has to start the process, and it's up to the board to indicate that the process gets started. So in my view, as my comment, our business can't be completed without a motion to, to start the process.
So because of the way the special meeting was called, and the only item that could be discussed on that special meeting, we've discussed and voted on, but we still have the option to have a special meeting right now. And I will explain how that's done, even though we're on public comment, or, excuse me, board comments. Under policy 1530 for special meetings, notice of a special meeting shall be given by mail at least 72 hours before the meeting, or by personal service 24 hours before the meeting. In lieu of a, this is where it's important for us, Mr. Reyes, in lieu of a timely notice and a full membership being present, a special meeting can be declared. So as soon as we go through our comments, and then I would be the last one to speak, I'm going to ask that we have a special meeting, because we are all here, and we can now adjourn this meeting and go into the second special meeting to determine what we will do.
Absolutely not. That's a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
It's in our policy manual, 1530. I'm simply following what's in there.
The policy manual cannot supersede state law. It's that simple.
Okay. If that's the wish of the board.
You just cut me off earlier in the meeting, because I was discuss, you said that I could not discuss anything that was not on the agenda.
Trustee Daly, you have not been recognized yet.
That is inappropriate and illegal.
Trustee Daly, you have not been recognized. You're out of order. So Mr. Trustee Reyes.
Mr. Chair, I request the floor.
Trustee Daly, I am speaking. If you give me just a moment, I will complete.
I will give you just a moment.
Trustee Daly.
I will give you just a moment.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Reyes, that was what my plan was. Now, if we legally cannot do that, then we will have to do this at another time. So it will be determined by the board. There's no reason for us to argue about this. I believe we will find, in just a second, when I call on somebody else, that, how we may need to go about doing this. But that was my idea, because I had the same concern you did. Trustee Freeman, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. This is on the, the topic of the special meetings. So I, I think that it's 1:00 on a Monday. I just found out about it on a Friday. I had meetings that were scheduled a month ago that I had to try and punt and get other people to take over. I am employed 9 to 5, and I, I, this, it's beyond inconvenient, and it really doesn't show any respect for those of us who are trying to manage our professional lives as well as our role here on the board. I, I think that there's a lot of people who would be interested in coming to and viewing these meetings live or give public comment as well. And I think that these last minute special meetings, almost the optics of it are, is that we're, we're being sneaky. And, and I guess the more we do it, the worse it's going to look, and there are some things that we can handle during committee meetings and prepare, so that during a regular meeting, like, we all know, and, you know, it's, that's the beauty of the committee meetings, is that we can actually legally meet, talk about stuff, and how we feel about certain things, because it's a public meeting, but we can't keep doing these special meetings where they're called like at the very last minute, and then we're getting $30 packages coming to our houses, and if, this is, I've, in my 12 years on this board, I've never experienced this. And I, I agree, Jeff and Wendy, it's like, we need to have cohesion, you know? We need to find a way to start working together. You know, my recommendation before was, you know, we could have found a better way to manage this procurement, because I'm, I'm fully supportive of the idea that every two years, we reexamine contracts, you know? We make sure we're getting the best value for our money, we're getting the best results from it, and we could have managed this easier. And, and, and one thing is, as I've been board chair, and I never, I never would have thought to make decisions without the blessings of the board, and that, you know, don't worry, I got this, you guys just sit back. I just, you know, I've been here long enough to know that there's pitfalls everywhere, and sometimes you have your main attorney, but they're not a specialist in the area, and then your board attorney should have to farm that out. I mean, I, I just think we have to be smart with the way that we work and how we work. And so, but I would really prefer us not to continue going into these special meetings that I think look really suspect. We should be able to manage things within committee meetings, and then, or we, if we do a committee of the whole and we merge, I don't care. That doesn't, you know, it can be either way. But we should be able to handle the business in regular meetings and committee meetings.
Mr. Chair. Trustee Couch.
Yes. Well, just, just to make this clear, this, this special meeting was just to, there was a motion made and a second on the last meeting. And this was just to, so that it would give an opportunity, it wasn't voted on. And so this was just an opportunity to, to vote on it. That would have been, that would have been it. That's what this special meeting was about, that and alone. Thank you.
Trustee Swanson, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. To answer trustee Freeman's, his remarks, no, I, I, I fully understand what you're saying. I, I too thought this was, we just get an interim attorney, really just to cover our butts, and that the board would hire the firm for the board. Now, for the record, the problem I had with the motion for the college to do that, it's our attorney. I think we should be involved in putting the procurements out. All right, maybe that's just me, I don't know. But, you know, I listened to your point, that we all should have some input, and you're right, we should. You know, this has turned into kind of a can of worms, but now we've got to get through it, so. But I understand, and the meetings at 1 o'clock during the day, you know, I own a business, and it's hard to get here. But, we've got to do it, you know? And whether it takes another special meeting, you know, I would be fine to have it in the evening, so people could be here, so it wouldn't interrupt our business lives as much. So, no, we all need to get together, so, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Trustee Wendy.
Trustee Walcott, thank you. I, when I got on this board, I never in a million years would think it's this big of a crap show, honestly. Like, it's a three-ring circus here. And I want what all of you want, but we truly have put our differences aside, and we have to move this college in the right direction. It's 2:30, I was already supposed to be somewhere by now. We really do need to put our pride aside and work together. Everyone does, that's it. I'm looking forward to having interviews with whoever we bring in, and I'm looking forward to working with the new attorney. And let's just stop all the bull crap, so we can, we're not getting anything accomplished, absolutely nothing, other than a waste of time and energy. So, I agree with everyone else here that we need to move forward here and work together. Thank you.
You're welcome. This point is the chair's opportunity to speak. And I have explained my idea. There's concern from Trustee Daley about doing it that way. So, I would like, informally now, but while still following Robert's Rules of Order, suggestions from each of you, how you would like to go forward on this. Do we need to call a special meeting at a different day and time in the evening? Do we need to take care of this, adjourn for five minutes, figure out the proper way we need to put together a motion, reconvene in a special meeting and decide on that? What's the pleasure of the board? And if we need a couple of minutes for you to think about it, I could, I could put this meeting in recess while we think about it, so we don't catch each other off-guard here. How would you like to do this at this point? So I'm asking, Art, do you want to recess for a couple of minutes, and then reconvene, and then decide what we're going to do?
I don't think a recess is necessary.
Necessary, okay. Mr. Freeman.
I'd rather just discuss it during committee.
Mrs. Couch.
I agree with Trustee Freeman.
Trustee Daley.
I agree with Trustee Freeman.
Okay. Trustee Walcott.
I agree with Trustee Freeman.
Okay. Trustee Swanson.
I agree with Trustee Freeman.
Okay. Now, for the, further from my comment, as before, when you wanted to speak some more, Trustee Daley, I'm asking you now, does this fulfill what you feel we need to do so we can move forward?
I believe that by taking it through committee action, that we're conforming with the Open Meetings Act.
Very good. So, as, this is not a motion, and we can't have a motion to do this, but the chair is now going to tell our board coordinator and the president that this is going to go to our next committee meeting, and we're going to work forward with that. Before I adjourn the meeting, is there any other questions or concerns that any of you have, so we make sure we go forward better? Yes, Trustee Daley?
We're not, just, as, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said here, that I want to see us, I want to see cohesion, and I want to see us move forward in the best interests of the community. But the way in which we take action has to conform to state statute, okay? The bylaws do not supersede the state statute, it is that simple. And Michigan is set up in a manner such that all municipal corporations, whether they be cities, villages, community colleges, whatever, are subordinate to the state. And so the idea of continually quoting the bylaws in opposition to state statute is never going to go anywhere. You're never going to win that argument, at least with me. And the second thing is that I'm concerned about, all of a sudden, there's this dying need to have immediate legal counsel. Of all the characteristics that I've encountered in dealing with the legal profession, speed is not one of them. We have, that I'm aware of, at the board level, we have no pending legal matters in front of us. So I believe it's more prudent for us to do our due diligence, and to have a process that incorporates all of us within that process in the selection of our final legal counsel, and even the interim for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
One person probably that could probably, like, lay out as far as what the college does in procurement would be Dr. Beverly and her staff. And I think some of the questions, like, it sounds like if we have the college run the procurement process for us, they don't decide, they don't score, they don't do any, like, in the last time we did this, it was like, we laid out the parameters, like, the questions, like, where you wanted to wait, experience, whatnot, the board designed that. They just did the grunt work of putting that out there, getting it back to us, so that we were the only people that, like, the board members all scored. And then we put it up, you know, in public, what our scores were, so everybody could see, you know? But, the only one, people that make the decision on who the legal representation is, is the board. You know, they just put everything out. They put the RFP out that we decide we want. So when we say the college runs the procurement, it's just the bare bones, like, I don't expect you or you expect me to actually, I'm going to build a list of all these attorneys, and I'm going to, you know, put out the RFP, and, I mean, we have a, we have a department that does procurement. So I would ask that Dr. Beverly be allowed the opportunity during our committee meetings to lay out what it is that the college does. Like, what does procurement look like, and how was it handled last time? Because I think that will help you in your comfort level as well. Even looking at a copy of the previous RFP that was put out, and just having that available to you and look at it, but.
Anyone else have any comments? I will now direct my attention to Trustee Daley's comment, the state statute. When the new board came on board, they were elected in November, not taking office until January. There was ample time for the college former board chair and president to give training on the Michigan Community College Act. There was no training on that. That, I agree, is something that needs to be done. It is the overarching rules that apply to this college and to this board. But that training to these new board members was never given. Therefore, we also need to move forward on that. So everyone understands, when you cite Michigan Community College Act 331 of 1966, that everybody knows what you're talking about, where it comes from, and where that diverges from our bylaws. So there is no question, and we're not arguing semantics here, there's facts. So, that's something that, as board chair, I will bring to the president, that we need to move forward on that. Therefore, there seems to be nothing else that we need to comment. Art, as you look like you had a comment. Do any of the rest of you have a comment? Okay. I think we're moving forward in the right direction to take it to the committee, and everybody come to a good understanding of where we're going. Therefore, I will adjourn this meeting, and thank you for taking time out of your day.